By notice sent the Asbury Park Press in two over times and posted in the main lobby of the municipal building as well as municipal website. Roll call please.
Mayor Portman, Greg Fitzjaro.
President.
Thomas Welsh, Christina Bonatakas, Dan Man Pusso.
Here.
Lloyd Demento, Barbara Broas.
Yeah.
Megan Messi.
Yeah.
Wilson Beebe. It's a Fernandez.
Yeah.
Frederick Stone, Brian Berning.
Yeah.
We have one application tonight for public hearing one ninety-nine Riverside Avenue, block one lot one. The Garden at Red Bank and Waterfront Development Zone, it's conditional use and site plan approval, all variances. To change the use of the property to a conditionally permitted cannabis retailer. Mr. Byrne, welcome.
Thank you very much. Look at stand or sit or what do you?
Any way you're in, um, you want to lie down, you can do that.
Level, so.
The key is that everyone can hear you.
That's very important.
That's the most important thing.
My phone is here, so.
Great.
Uh, my name is Douglas Byrne, Byrne and Associates in Agawood, New Jersey.
Hold the mic, hold the mic closer, please, reference off the picking you up.
Better?
Yes.
We provided notices to your board secretary earlier today, so. I believe the board has jurisdiction to hear the matter. Uh, I did want to preface it a little bit by sharing with the board that a funny thing happened to us on the way to this hearing. Just the, the morning where we learned that the, uh, we simultaneously with this application for ladies approvals, we submitted for approval by the municipal for the cannabis permit. And through a casual conversation with Peter Pito and our board, our applicant engineer, we learned that three of the three licenses were approved by the council, where we, we had no idea that that was even in process. So we have been moving, uh, very seriously to satisfy the requirements of this board. And we've met with the, the Rivers Center to consult with them, changed our design, you'll hear about all that. But I just want to say that we were pretty much shocked this morning to find that uh, the licenses were given out. So we're here before this board for various approvals for a facility that may never be implemented.
You're not the, you're not the only one. You're not the only one in a similar situation who are applying to for their approvals, even though they know that the license, three licenses have already been.
But we didn't know until this morning.
I understand. So do you want to go home then?
All right. But we did, uh, just to put a finer point on it, we did successfully get an approval from the council back in, I think, June. So naturally, it's just odd that you were left in the dark. So anyway, let me proceed with the ladies.
Nobody purposely left you in the dark. And if you or your client or anyone involved in your application read any newspaper, blog, or paid any attention to what's going on in town, you'd know that all three were, were issued, but it, they, a hundred people can keep coming to this board and we have to hear it. So someone makes applications, we're not connected with the number of licenses that the town.
Clearly, this is a different board, um, representative of our planning boards and zoning. So I know that your jurisdiction and, uh, you know, certainly respect that. And I know you're not involved in the municipal side of things, but I did want to put it into context. So, um, this is an application for a site at one ninety-nine Riverside Avenue. It used to be known as A E Rector. Place, uh, block one, lot one. It's the intersection of Rector Place and Route thirty-five. It's in the W D Waterfront Development District, uh, right along the Navasink River. Um, we are applying for a retail cannabis dispensary pursuant to your ordinance. The facility is, as you see on your plans, two thousand five hundred twenty-three square feet. It's, um, new construction. Uh, we included thirty-one parking spaces. Uh, as you know, it's a conditionally permitted use in the W D zone under section four ninety dash one twenty-two of your ordinance. The application is essentially variance free. Uh, we are requesting one waiver because of the nature of the site. Uh, we require parking to be in the front, not in the rear where the river is. I think as you listen to a presentation, uh, you'll find it of interest. It's a state of the art facility designed by people who designed these sorts of, uh, facilities. There's some very serious security concerns, uh, and, um, the way, um, that people are admitted and so on. Um, so it's a great opportunity for us to design the ground up and you know, we're quite happy with the design. This is replacing a four eight pump Exxon station, which is more or less collided eyesore at the property. It had, uh, as I said, eight, eight pumps. So it was a pretty intensive operation, uh, operated by Exxon. There's a, uh, still a cleanup going on, an environmental cleanup, which we're committed to, uh, see through to completion. We worked on the design, as I mentioned, with the River Center. We consulted with them. Uh, and we thank them for their review and for their input. I think it improved, uh, the facility and I think that they learned some of the concerns about designing, uh, one of these dispensaries. We received comment letters that were reviewed, uh, through professionals from the board engineer, the River Center, the Shade Tree Commission, Chief McConnell and the Environmental Commission. That's really pretty comprehensive. As I mentioned, I think the proposal meets or exceeds, uh, most of the zoning department requirements. Uh, the existing site is one point oh four acres. It was at one time also approved for hotel use by, uh, Colonel Zizford of the zoning board.
It's this board.
It was this board.
The site, the site has a very long history and I think we're going to be very interested in how this site is going to operate. We had three long applications. We know about security. We know how they function, how the, how the, uh, retail use functions. But I think that that's very important as how the site, site's going to function because of its very dangerous spot. Effort wise.
Uh, the application meets all conditions of your retail cannabis dispensary. Um, we're going to have four witnesses. We have our engineer, Chris. Of inside, um, engineers, we have the site plan. They'll provide an description, uh, answer questions. We have an architect. Uh, Jesse Mulberg, if we have any architectural collaboration, um, she's very experienced with these type of facilities and designs them for over ten years. We have a traffic engineer, Gary Dean, Dalton and Dean. They'll discuss the traffic, uh, concerns. Uh, we're actually consolidating driveways. That was a suggestion that we've seen and I think uh, it's in concert with your own, um, with your own engineer. Uh, you'll, you'll see that. You'll also hear about a traffic study that he did and, uh, the level of service that's going to be rendered, uh, uh, projected to be rendered at the completion of this project. We also have with us a security consultant, Mike Allen, former police chief, uh, who's been, uh, a part of the team. Uh, he's available to answer any questions. Uh, oftentimes boards have concerns about the security. So with that, I'd like to start with my first witness, who is, uh, Chris Benarski. Um, he's with inside engineers.
I can watch the mouth.
One of these, one of these. Did it so much for him?
I will soon as he sits down.
Mr. Byrne, why don't you pull that microphone over so that you both have luck?
Okay, sir, would you raise your right hand? If you're ready to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Tell us who you are and where your office is.
My name is Chris Benarski.
Big ol' team.
About it?
Yes.
My name is Christopher Benarski. I work at Insight Engineering in Wall, New Jersey. Uh, I've been a professional engineer for the last eight years. I've been in the industry for fifteen years. I have testified before multiple planning and zoning boards throughout the state. And I've been an accepted witness and my license.
Are you going to testify as an engineer, as an alderman, or just an engineer?
Just an engineer.
And your license?
Your license, yes.
New Jersey.
Yes, I'm current, and you will accept it. I agree very much.
Uh, Chris, you, um, prepared the site plan and this matter.
Yes, that's correct. And it's a given to submit it for the board as an exhibit. Is this is, this is not, is it called an aerial render mark of the pin of the rendering?
Oh, that one of these?
Yeah, it's the, uh, the first exhibit I'm going to be referring to is existing conditions exhibit.
Okay.
Art rendering, uh, an aerial photograph.
Mark that able tonight?
Yes.
If you, before you do that, just, um, you can leave with the site. Yes, uh, have you visited the site?
Yes.
And, uh, any unusual aspects or is that going to be part of your, uh?
Uh, yeah, yes, there's, there's quite a few unique aspects to the site. Uh, and I also have another exhibit here, which I'll, I'll refer to, uh, in a minute, but that'll, I guess that would be eight two. That is a rendered, uh, site plan, uh, rendered core site. Uh, eight, eight two, that was the other handout.
Okay, why don't you describe the, uh, the site and any features?
So this is, this is, uh, I, I know we were talking about this. This is the existing, uh, gas stations, uh, that's currently here. It's located on block one, lot one. And it's one ninety-nine Riverside, uh, formerly, formerly known as A E Rector Place. The lot is forty-three thousand three hundred eighty-five square feet, um, in the waterfront development district zone, which requires thirty thousand square foot lots. Project is also within the special improvement district. As I mentioned, there are several unique aspects to the site. It is a regularly shaped corner lot with frontage on Route thirty-five and Rector Place. It is also located at the intersection of Riverside Avenue, Bridge Avenue, Rector Place and Route thirty-five. Um, and it currently, it currently has been an existing abandoned gas station for some time. Serves as the gateway into Red Bank. It is a waterfront property along the Swimming River and the Navasink River, and it is fully encompassed by a three hundred foot riparian zone. Because Navasink River is a category one water. Uh, the proposed building, however, is not going to be located within a flood hazard. We do plan to construct improvements within the previously disturbed areas only. And that is going to reduce the amount of impervious surfaces on site and also increase the amount of open space, the sixty-six percent of the site where only fifteen is, uh, is required by your ordinance. Uh, as our attorney had mentioned, this is a, uh, a permitted conditional use. Um, and maybe all the conditional use requirements. I can read, um, them in for the record if you prefer. Um, the existing building is one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven square feet. It's a commercial building. It was a gas station. It had a canopy with eight fueling stations. Our proposed building is only two thousand five hundred and twenty-three square feet. Um, and it will be proposed for cannabis rebuild. Currently onsite, there are no formal delineated parking spaces. Um, there, we, we just mentioned the eight fueling stations under the canopy. And we're proposing, and I, I suppose I'll go to my eight-two exhibit.
That must be with the improvements on it.
Yes, it is.
There, right?
That one right there, yes. The, the, it's, it's, it's essentially C three hundred of our site plan set, um, colorized to stand out on an aerial photograph. Uh, there, we are proposing thirty-one parking spaces, uh, being provided where only eleven are required, uh, per your ordinance. Uh, we include two ADA spaces and one parking space, complied with the state statute. We also, uh, there was a comment in the engineering review letter, uh, we had showed the parking spaces as standard spaces, but we have no problem changing the airpin to comply with the ordinance and not request. Um, we do provide a loading, uh, zone, although the size of the building does not require us to provide a loading zone because it's less than ten thousand square feet. Um, the loading zone we have provided is twelve by twenty-four and it is going to accommodate deliveries on it, on, on the southern side of the building. Uh, deliveries will be via Sprinter van that will utilize this loading space. Uh, the plans that were submitted showed a covered loading zone. Um, however, the loading zone was revised to, uh, remove that cover. And I show that on the, uh, the current rendering I provided to. Um, this change does actually decrease the building coverage from six point two percent, five point six percent. Uh, and five point six percent of the whole site is, is not much. Um, it's actually half as much as what's currently out there with the gas station and the canopy. Uh, regarding refuse, uh, there was an existing refusing closer adjacent to the existing building and we're proposing it, uh, to be at the end of the drive aisle and a private hauler will pick up the refuse and recycles as needed. Regarding the traffic testimony, we have our traffic engineer here and he'll, uh, provide additional traffic testimony later in the presentation. Uh, there are, uh, there are existing utilities that were serviced, uh, the property because it was a previously developed site. We plan on reusing the existing utilities as much as possible. Uh, for sewer, we propose a new sewer lateral, uh, to connect to the existing sewer lateral that's near the property line. And we, uh, to, to comply with the, the engineer's review letter, we will televise that and make sure that it is, uh, the existing lateral is functioning and, and good and make any repairs as necessary. Uh, we propose new water and gas, uh, connections at Rector Place and we expect to reuse the electrical services on the property. From a stormwater standpoint, uh, there are a few existing inlets that, on the property that tie into a thirty-six inch R C P uh, pipe onsite and that ultimately all outfalls directly into Navasink River. And the rest of the water, uh, surface runoff flows right off into the adjacent right of ways and enters the source system, the storm system around the site. Uh, we are collecting the onsite drainage and connecting to this thirty-six inch pipe in a similar manner. And then the proposed project will, uh, reduce any runoff into the river. We are, uh, proposing more than a half an acre of disturbance on the site. So that does qualify as a major domed for your stormwater ordinance. However, we are reducing impervious and motor vehicle pavement surfaces as part of this application. And that, um, helps with stormwater quality. We are also, uh, exempt from stormwater quantity runoff because it, we're directly discharging into the Navasink River, which is a tidal water body. And we are also exempt from groundwater recharge requirements because of the previous nature of the site being the gas station and any contamination that was, uh, there, a high pollution loading. We are, we are heavily, uh, landscaping the site, uh, as much as we can within CRC guidelines. Um, there is no existing formal landscape outside. There's a couple of trees, um, there's five unhealthy trees along Route thirty-five that will be removed. Um, we propose a, a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs throughout the site. Um, in the front, uh, safety island, we planted it, uh, between the street and the parking lot, providing shrubs to block headlights from the street. Uh, we also have provided eight street trees along the frontage to comply with the ordinance. Um, there was a comment in the review letter that we needed possibly an additional tree. Um, but we, uh, we excluded the site triangles on either side of the access drives per the requirements. And so we got, um, the eight required. Um, however, we do actually show a ninth tree just off of the, uh, drive aisle on the northern portion of the site, uh, outside of the site triangle. So if a nine tree was requested, we do show a nine tree there. Um, there were also minor comments from the Shade Tree Commission and the, the Red Bank Environmental Commission. Um, you know, really for tree selection and we have no problem complying with those and accommodating that, making changes as necessary. No pinouts, correct, no pinouts. Uh, for lighting, um, you know, there's a couple existing lights on the site and it's really unknown if they're actually operational. They're more of a decorative, uh, feature. So we didn't include them in our analysis for the, for the lighting plan. Um, we, we'd like to have them either remain if they're operational, uh, because they do match the property across the street. Um, or be relocated if they cause an issue with any of our, uh, proposed improvements. Or if, if the board has no preference, uh, we would like it to be removed and then we could have, you know, the, just the, the new lighting that we're proposing on site. Uh, we do propose three new full mounted lights at eighteen feet tall and three building mounted lights at eleven feet tall. Um, they comply with the minimum lighting levels and height for the light bulbs and they also comply with the maximum light exposure on the adjacent properties. We are proposing one fully conforming building, uh, mounted sign. It is the max amount of square footage is a hundred and twenty square feet required by the ordinance and we're proposing eighty square feet. So, uh, not really even close to the maximum. Um, and the sun will be backlit with halo lights and it's permitted to be illuminated internally or externally for your ordinance. As our attorney mentioned, we do have a, a waiver that we're requesting for parking in the front yard. Um, and I think in this case, it makes a lot of sense to have that parking there because there's really no other spot for parking. Um, and, and also to stay within that previously developed area. There also was a comment in the review letter about maybe a waiver being required for the loading zone. But as I mentioned, since we do not have a loading zone requirement, um, we don't need a waiver for, it is, the things not big enough for the, uh, for needing a loading zone. There was also an ordinance requirement that, uh, two shrubs and one tree be planted for each of two hundred and fifty square feet of open space. Not inclusive of environmentally sensitive areas. As I mentioned, the entire project is within a three hundred foot riparian zone and therefore a sensitive area. And so we don't feel that we are, uh, that, that, that requirement applies to the site. However, out of an abundance caution, we would request that design waiver as well if, if, if you grant that. We also, uh, there is, there is a twenty-five foot access easement along the Navasink River. And we, you know, that is existing. Uh, we weren't proposing any provisions for like passive, uh, enjoyment of the riverfront. So we are requesting relief from that requirement. We'd be happy to comply with that requirement, uh, but not at the expense of, of, of this board approval. Uh, in the past, the D, the D E P actually, uh, was the reason why the previous hotel project did not, uh, go forward. Everybody had received, uh, approvals from all other, um, outside agencies, this board, the, uh, D O T. Every, everybody approved that project and then he said, no, because okay, uh, they, they said there was too much disturbance in the riparian zone. So they denied that project. Um, so we would be happy to comply if it was, we're able to, um, and, and the D E P would allow it and as, as well as the CRC. Uh, because the Cannabis Regulatory Commission also has pretty strict guidelines of what, you know, they don't want people walking, you know, behind the, the thing and their pedal. Mike Allen will talk about the security measures in place and everything, but, um, we would be happy to comply with it if, if we are allowed to. So maybe the condition that the D E P allows it. Um, there's a, there's a couple, uh, other items that I can talk with you to direct testimony or if Greg had any outstanding, um, comments for me based on his review letter. But, uh, I'd be happy to respond to any of those. Um, a lot of the comments in his letter were, were, um, we, we could accommodate a lot of the, the comments, so.
Want to go through my new comments today?
So much. Before we do that, Greg, is there anything in the engineer's letter that you can comply with?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so. I think, uh, you know, we, we, you had a good phone call, conversation today and I think we, we kind of, uh, agreed with, with most of the things in there. I don't think there's really anything, uh, that was, uh, surprising or that we couldn't comply with. Um, but if there's anything specific we wanted to discuss, that would.
Yeah, I think, um, starting just kind of going in order in our letter, um, I think the first one we should talk about is, uh, as you're talking about the, the access easement and the, uh, river views. Um, so the, the way the ordinance is written, um, it says that, um, the applicant shall provide, uh, require provisions for passive enjoyment of the river views by residents and the general public. There's also a requirement that they have a twenty-five foot easement along the riverfront, which they do have already. Um, now, based on, um, what Chris had said, um, and, you know, being that it says the provisions for enjoyment of river views and not that they have to access the riverfront. I think the board could consider other options such as, you know, providing uh, park benches or something like that on the property with that, that provides for other views. Um, if the applicant or the board would, would, um, be amenable to that.
And Greg, would, would they, would they be able to be placed in a location that wouldn't require the D E P to approve it?
I would probably defer to Chris about that much.
Then, yeah, there, there are some CRC requirements that we have to be talking soon enough. Um, but we do have, you know, the, the limit of, uh, existing, you know, development, uh, does have a little bit of area there where it, you know, appears maybe on the northern side of the site, pretty, uh, you know, as, as far away from the dispensary as, as possible. There may be an opportunity for some benches there to look out onto the Navasink if, if it's, uh, if it's amenable to, you know, the, the CRC and, and also the.
And now following up on that, you know, it is for public enjoyment. So would we have to have some sort of easement and, um, you know, agreement or, you know, allowance for the public to access the site and access, you know, wherever those would be installed, I guess the applicant would have to agree with that.
Uh, it could be in the residential pool, it could be developers and we can, I would just, uh, say that, you know, we have our security person here who's very familiar with CRC regulations. And we were told on some previous discussions that CRC doesn't want, uh, people hanging around, uh, cannabis dispensary with obvious reasons. So it's not designed for people to relax or certainly not to buy product and sit around a lot. That's forbidden.
So basically, we, we, the board would probably want to hear more testimony from the security.
We, we can get that to another point. Mr. Byrne, please pull your microphone a little closer.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the, uh, the loading space comment, um, Chris, uh, Mr. Benarski is correct. This particular use because it's not under, not over ten thousand square feet, they aren't required to have a loading space. Uh, we put the comments in there because there's really no other standards of the ordinance, uh, for a, um, a loading space other than the thirty-five by twelve, um, loading space requirement. So a technical waiver is probably required, um, but we have no objection for that. And then the last one I wanted to touch on, um, the waiver request for the, um, trees and shrubs, um, based on the open space. Um, so the, the ordinance doesn't have any exclusions technically for riparian areas or any environmentally sensitive areas. We know that you really can't touch those. So we, um, included that commentary in our letter because it just, it made sense. We have no objection to them getting a waiver there. Uh, I, I believe they're also going to testify to some other, um, comments regarding security and other things, uh, related to that. Um, so the further back or later, but, um, I believe that all I really have for this witness. Does the board have any questions?
There was two other comments. I, I'm sorry, I missed my, my direct test. Uh, there was one comment regarding the, uh, connection to maybe the, uh, to the public sidewalk, uh, from the street. And we don't have any objections to providing a sidewalk, uh, down the southern part of the site there. Um, you know, the, the sidewalk, uh, might, uh, you know, get a little bit, uh, closer to the refuse area and, you know, be, uh, a little bit over the, uh, fifteen foot residential buffer line, but it would be no closer than what was previously. But it would be no closer than what was previously, uh, existing on site, so it would be an improvement. Um, and we also, as we mentioned before, we were committed to providing the buffering, the park buffering there with the evergreens. Uh, the double stacks, um, along that side to for the screen this facility from, from the, uh, from the public.
So you're saying that the buffer, the, the sidewalk connection to the public right away would be on the, I guess it's the western side? Against the residential property?
Uh, not, not directly against the property line, but, uh, connected to the.
We can't see this, this is, uh, yeah, turn, no, I know, I have a copy, but I can't see where his pen is.
So along, along this sidewalk here, we would connect a sidewalk, uh, directly, basically perpendicular behind the refuse area. And connect to this, uh, sidewalk in the front. That, that basically connects to the existing, uh, crosswalk area that was just redone by the DFT.
So I, I have a question and keep in mind that we're, we have a lot to talk about, but while we're talking about the refuse area. I, I, I don't like the idea of a sidewalk going behind it. Half the trouble I got into my, into my life was behind someone's dumpster and the other half was behind someone's garage, so. I don't, I don't love the sidewalk behind the dumpster and I don't particularly love the dumpster where it is near a residential property. If we get to the point where, where the board i- is thinks favorable of this application. I'd certainly like to see the dumpster moved across the park knot to the north side. Because if you, you've got space over there, you've got that large green space there. I'd certainly love to see it away from a residential property. So that's something you can think about, um. Speaking of that corner, Rexter and Highway thirty-five, if DOT was amenable. Would your app, would your, your client be open to shaving some of that sidewalk off to facilitate a more normal turn onto Rector Place? Could probably be accomplished with five or six feet pushing in, and I realize it's all up to DOT at, at that point, but that turn on Director Place is one of the worst in town. Not to mention there's a storm drain there that has probably made, you know, the local tire business a fortune. So that's certainly saying, Greg, you can weigh in on this. I, I, I don't know if the DOT would be interested in this, but this is an opportunity to really fix that corner. And you've got tons of open space, you've got lots of room on this site that if you shaved five or six feet off of that corner to facil- facilitate a better turning radius, I think that will go a long way. And I realize that that's, you know, you've got to agree to it first, but it, it, we're obviously, you know, in, in DOT's court on that.
Sure, and I, I think the, our traffic engineer might better suit it as that and, and what, uh, the DOT may or may not, uh, be willing to do. Um, but, uh, we will, we'll take the refuse area relocation under consideration. And, uh, that would, uh, that would bring the, uh, the, the sidewalk into a little bit better of a situation.
Do you have any other testimony, Mr. Bednarski?
Uh, the only other thing I had on, on my, uh, my testimony here was, uh, I spoke with the LSRP for the site about the historic, uh, uh, contamination, uh, that was in Mr. Gito's letter. And, uh, there was, uh, some historical areas of concern on the property, of course, because it was a, it's an existing gas station. However, of all the, all of those areas have been remediated, um, in the soil and the groundwater. And an unrestricted use response action outcome letter was issued. Uh, I'm on LSRP, I, I don't, uh, you know, fully have all that information there, but that's what I was told. Um, there's also one other item, which is historic bill material, uh, identified beneath the site. That is in place, but it's going to be, uh, considered, uh, a classification exception area, a CDA. And that will be covered by the cap of the pavement and the building, uh, when the site gets fully developed. So there was a couple of items in his, uh, Mr. Gito's, uh, review letter regarding the environmental sensitive areas. And so I just wanted to provide some testimony on that to.
Anyone from the board have any questions from Mr. Bednarski or Mr. Byrne so far? Anyone from the public have any questions for the engineer and the applicant so far about the testimony so far? Just questions. Come on up. Mr. Byrne, this is where we share the microphone.
I want to raise your right hand, swear to tell the, swear to tell the, you swear to tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
One question, uh, you guys brought up the possible passive activity behind the building. I know there's been talk about a riverwalk. When a riverwalk, is there any of the experience about a passive?
The, the river. The, the easement that we've been collecting from everyone on the river forever. So that, that doesn't necessarily allow access through every property as much as it does along the water. So let me rephrase your question and let me know if I get it right. The town could at some point build a riverwalk, literally connecting that entire side of town. Do you think the CRC would have a problem with a riverwalk there? And let's assume the public doesn't have access at that point. Public's not going to have access to the riverwalk from every single property. It's not practical. So let's say there's no public access at this point, but a riverwalk is someday constructed. Do you think, and, and perhaps your security expert might be the right person to ask, that the CRC would have a problem with that being built with no direct access from this site, just along the, the water?
I think I would defer to the security expert. However, you know, it goes along with what we're saying that, you know, the CRC doesn't particularly like people flirting around and, and, you know, just, uh, you know, even it is in the backyard of this site, uh, so again, I'll, I would defer to our security expert.
This, this comment is, I get where you need to go? Okay. Anyone else in the public have any questions? Come on up, sir, I have seats.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. That was who you are.
You can have a seat right in the microphone.
My name is Sean Mobile and, um, my business, uh, I own the property next door and putting the, um, What? I live in Saragossa and I've lived in, uh, you know, all my life. I owned a property next door, it was eighty-three, that was nice. I've been here before, a couple of years, you know, we went through that for three years. Right there, but I mean, I was, I'm happy that that wasn't already, I think they want a ninety-foot building next to my house. With a swimming pool sits on top of the garage, like spring hat, and a train wheel. And I have a problem with the building, the building now, I do have some issues though. Uh, my family owned all of that property, this house that I own now, along with my mother. My family had a lot of places there, a motel, a restaurant, everything, so. Um, I'm very familiar with that, I grew up, I spent nineteen years of my life there. And when my family sold it, I was halfway around the world from here. Um, I, I, you, one of my things that I mentioned that, that, that the, 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 was about the dumpster. I, I don't want a dumpster next to my house. I have two green tenants there. And in today's world, to find decent tenants, they've been here about ten, twelve years.
Mr. Mo, no, I, I hate to interrupt you. Are you driving to a question?
No, no.
Because comments come later.
Okay, no, okay.
And I appreciate the history and I remember it all, but I, but if you can drive to a question for us, I really appreciate that.
I'm sorry about that. Okay, so that was my one issue, the dumpster. Okay, our second issue was what you discussed too about the turn on Rector Place. I tried to work with Mr. Coleman on that and, uh, I got nowhere with it. I always felt I administered at that time, I thought that would be a great idea to straighten that. I lived there nineteen, I was there nineteen years and we were corrected tires and accidents. Back around here today, the tractor, the trailer sat there, I would ground it, the, uh, law. So I will say that, I, I would have a problem with that property. My other, my other thing is, is the shrubbery that I discussed with him. And he, uh, I didn't have, have no, uh, I don't want in those there, he told me that they want to have them.
Okay, no.
Okay, that's good. And I don't mind the sidewalk that you're, you're talking about. They're all my property and I don't have that. The only thing I would like to see is some very high armor writings there. To protect the, of my, of the view of my property there, um.
So your question is, would the applicant be willing to plant a row of arborvitae along the property line?
Yes, thank you. Uh, sixteen, at least sixteen feet high, that people make them, they do have them. That, that would, I would appreciate it if they look into that, just to protect my property, but the last applicant. All that property, the, this and, and, uh, residential and when the council went back and, and the council changed that to all residential. So now I am strictly residential and I guess somewhere, I hope it stays that way. So, and that would, that would be my one, one request from I, I provided the wrong there. No trees, the right, and, and the, the planning is that they are now, with them horrible trees, will they all go?
Yes.
Three or trees, they're, they're horrible, they would put them nearby Exxon, they, they let them go, like, like, down the tubes and it just jump, like, so we would, they moved all that.
The, the, the intention is to provide a new screening of there.
Okay, so my request would be if we put some sixteen-foot high arborite, uh, arborite there. And I also, the fence, the fence, what, did you put a fence along there, was he willing?
People are keeping the fence, the six-foot fence is what?
Okay.
Is that your fence?
No, that's, that's your fence, not any angle, you're going to put Exxon to fix it and answer Exxon without a wood system. They, um, they have the main thing that I probably did. Like you had on your draw, this one's a plastic fence.
Plastic fence?
The white vinyl fence.
Uh, well, look at that, we're going to keep the, uh, the existing.
Greg, are you aware of the condition of the existing fence?
It, yeah, it's, it's not in the best of shape.
Here's a wonderful opportunity to really improve the site, so please. Well, vinyl's permitted. You want to put up a pressure-treated teak fence, that's fine with me too, but I think when you.
We'll, we'll look at it. I mean, certainly our intention is to. And we'll look at the, the, we did get recommendations from the environmental commission on exactly what they want. Could apply with that.
Okay, I understand, and, and, uh, I just, because I'm a bit professional, you know, like I, I said, I, I got three tenants there. And like I said, it's, you get good tenants, you don't want to lose them on some other property. So all my tenants, I think we clear up and.
Thank you very much. And anyone else in the public have any questions for the engineer or the applicant so far?
I want to raise your right hand. Swear, swear to tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
I live in, then I live at seventy-nine Rector Place, right next door to his house.
You said Deming?
Deming, D E M I N G.
Thank you.
I just want to ask, I have a statement later and I know how this works, so I want to do a statement as to size this question, but like, do you guys know that your property is still leaking petroleum onto his property and probably my property too?
No.
Yeah, you know that.
We know that.
Because you, I said you have like an environmental clean bill of health. When I stand in my yard, I see the trail that goes from the backyard building down the hill, there is property to the corner of my property, to the water. And in case nobody was aware of it, I took pictures before I came over of the shiny water that sits in the yard that comes from your gas station. So, so I was expecting you to be addressing that. And then you have an environmental clean bill of health, I'm not sure it gave you that, that's not in my eye. So just wanted to throw that out there and then I asked. I don't know if you know that, but you should, you should go check it out.
Yeah, if you've got testimony, Mr. Byrne, on the environmental situation coming up?
We have, first of all, we don't own the property.
Right.
Uh, it's owned by someone else. They have, uh, for all time, I guess Exxon retained an LSRP and it's been undergoing, uh, cleanup. I believe there's monitoring wells there still. Uh, our engineer testified us to the results, uh, uh, to date, uh, in respect of the certifications. We'll look at that. Certainly it's a concern that we would have as we acquire the property.
We're, we're aware of the official status of it from the DEP. Okay, we'll have our engineer look at it as well. Anyone else in the public have any questions so far? Okay, move forward.
It puts great testimony, nobody here can answer any additional question. Uh, next I would like to present our architect, Jesse Moberg, to discuss the, um, actual structure that's going to be, uh, hopefully constructed at the site and some of the specific attributes of it. Uh, I mentioned before, the security concerns and, um, what flow of the building. The employees inside, how, how it's going to process, uh, customers. And also how it's going to lay out on the site and preserve, uh, the open space that we talked about. So, I don't know if Jesse has testified here before. You may want to ask her a question.
Uh, this is the same as what was submitted to you previously, it's just a printout.
Want to raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
Hey, just give us a rundown of your call occasions, please.
Uh, my name is Jesse Moberg. I am with Givney Arxel Collaborative, we're based out of Lowell, Massachusetts. Um, mainly, oh, Lowell, Massachusetts.
Okay, are you licensed in New Jersey?
Uh, so I am the architect for this cannabis resale project, okay, one ninety-nine.
Hang on another second, give us a little, uh, how long have you been practicing? Do you license in New Jersey? Yes. How long have you been practicing?
Uh, I have a.
Oh, no, definitely not. Just tell me how long you've been practicing as an architect. And, uh, how often or how frequently do you testify before planning and zoning boards?
I testify pretty regularly, um, outside of the state, I've only done it once.
Be qualified and still. Okay, well, except you as a, as a professional in the field of architecture.
So, um, as I said, my name is Jesse Moberg. I am the architect for the proposed cannabis retail at one ninety-nine Riverside Ave in Red Bank. I'll also serve as the lead of the design team, uh, which includes engineers, civil researchers, people who are recording the working drawings and the engine build out. And as I said, I, I am a registered architect in seven different states, including Jersey. As an architect or an architect and planner for fifteen years.
Yeah, give that part.
Well, we're talking cannabis-specific experience, I've been in cannabis jobs for ten years, specializing in only cannabis jobs for the last five. Um, Kivney Architects, we had done approximately four million square feet of cannabis facilities, including fifty-four. Full operations. This makes us pretty uniquely qualified, this project type. What that means is we can, um, design for not only the needs of the business, but the requirements for security, the right of the right requirements from the cannabis right of the commission, uh, distinctive, again, security needs for this type of buildings. And executing a engaging and great with its, or customers. Quick overview of the, the site, I won't rehash what Chris just went through, um.
Just to stop the, uh, on the board, is plans that have been submitted are ready to board?
Correct, yes, um, and that is the eleven by seventeen I just handed out to you as well. Uh, up on this easel currently is the rendering, I'm going to switch the book.
If I could just interject, you know what I love most about the first page? The line of arborvitae that you have in the picture. Let everybody know, but I appreciate that, Gary. Yes.
Okay, so, um, as they mentioned before, there is an existing, um, non-operational service station located on the site which will be demolished and removed in its entirety for the construction of a new building. Uh, this removal will include tearing down the existing building and the canopy roof, all the old gas pumps. Removal of any foundations, cutting and caving all utilities underground in preparation for new construction. And coordinating with the town of Red Bank and any other relevant agencies, uh, who have jurisdiction for the safe removal of any remaining components uh, related to the service station. And again, it's the environmental, it's our post question, but, uh, as part of any construction, we will follow any uh, state, federal or local regulations needed for the renovation of that site. I'm gonna um switch to the floor plan in a second, uh but just an overview of the exterior and the basics for the building. The proposed new building is a single-story slab-on-grade, light-aged metal frame building with a frame of five thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand five hundred and twenty-three square feet. Uh we did submit on the uh the submission that we gave to you previously had the correct square footage. It was too high. So it's actually uh the two thousand five hundred and twenty that we testified today is correct. There was a an error on my part on previous ones. Um there are three exterior doors. We have the front facade with the customer entry and customer exit, hidden staff and product delivery door located opposite of the parking lot and making public view. Uh this helps to separate customer operations foot traffic, adds a layer of security by keeping deliveries both physically and visually away from public pathways. Um as this is new construction, uh we'll have new building systems installed for the chemical, electrical, plumbing, and tire launch. Design of these systems are provided by licensed engineers in those trades. Um in construction level drawings, we show full compliance with all technical codes, including the international building and energy codes, New Jersey building and energy codes, cannabis regulatory commission requirements, and any additional local requirements or bylaws. This entire facility is also fully amenity accessible as well as any more restrictive state or local. Especially importantly.
Um Jesse, one thing about the uh River Center, just tell the board uh confrontation with River Center and.
Come in. The customer entrance is roughly centered on the thirty thirty-five facing to start the building. This garden is supposed to share entry vestibule where customers will be greeted by a receptionist and where the ID check will occur. Um the ID check not only verifies that the person is of age, but that the person on the ID is the person standing in front of you and that the ID is real. We have security here if you have any questions on that process. Uh no person will be allowed to enter the dispensary sales area without an valid ID presented, showing that they are at least twenty-one years age. Once customer, customer's ID is verified, they're granted access to the dispensary floor where they have the option to browse menus, view displays with any packaging or merchandise, new educational materials, back products, speak with knowledgeable staff about uses and benefits of different products, and place orders via tablet or kiosk for pickup at the sales counter. Um no cannabis product will be on the sales floor and no customer can pick up or touch any cannabis products anywhere in the facility. Once a customer has placed an order, they would then queue at the sales counter to receive their order.
Definitely.
Once they're asked to order at the sales counter, they're able to just hop right in the queue um at the sales counter instead of placing an order. So that's reasonable. We put a sale area, which is a restricted staff-only area and is the location where transactions take place between the union and customers. Once this transaction occurs, the customer will then exit through a secure exit vestibule opposite the end. Um this helps separate foot traffic on the sales floor and adds a layer of security by ensuring that nobody is able to sneak in the door without an ID check. These are the only areas of the building that are accessible to customers other than the toilets. All other areas are restricted to staff only and access is controlled via door hardware integrated with the security system. Essentially means it's a card reader um that it's programmed for each individual employee. The staff-only areas, uh which we like to call the back of house, are accessed through a secure hallway or in the one of sale area. And a breakdown of the back houses as follows. Uh products are delivered in small commercial vans, not box trucks or tractor trailers. This is typically a board transit or we say sprinter van. Uh it's it's a van that fits in standard-sized parking space. Uh there's a designated loading zone on the south or the left side of the building for delivery and parking. Product receiving will turn to the product entry door located in the back of the building. Uh this door is also secured via card reader for staff and deliveries are received and overseen by a manager. Um security, you have a better idea what that process looks like as well. All cannabis products should be stored in secure storage at all times when the dispensary is not open. Access to this area is highly limited and a low over-access levels uh for the building and straight up here. Um this area is a reinforced vault-type construction, which is the standard for cannabis facilities in most jurisdictions. Um I do have details of that if you would like it, but it's gets a little technical. Basically, it's a secure vault wall that's reinforced with steel. Um this room is access controlled to a higher level, so only management staff will have access to that area. Uh the order prep space is for the assembly orders and for base stock to limit the frequency of access needed to the vault space during operating hours. Access to this area is also highly restricted to manage only. Um all orders placed via pre-order tablets on the sales floor or up at the counter will be filled there and passed to the bartender to complete the transaction. The SIT room or security and IT room houses the security system and only the security system. Um this is the same construction type as the vault and no other elements will be located in here, including electric panels or any kind of storage. Uh the general storage closet is for non-cannabis materials only, spitting paper goods, cleaning supplies, propulsion materials, et cetera. Um the back of house also has some office space, floor management, a break room for staff, ADA compliant toilets, computer janitors, same. You know, as discussed in the previous testimony, there is a dumpster on site and this is for non-cannabis trash only. Um all cannabis trash or cannabis-containing materials that leave the facility not with the customer have to be returned to the grow or manufacturing facility of origin or destroyed under supervision through CRC. I'm gonna switch to the exterior elevations. Um that'll give you an idea of all sides of the building and the construction. As this is new construction, a new building envelope is required in this project. That includes exterior walls, doors, windows, storefront glazing, roofing, strating, plating. And with construction drawings, all envelope drawings will be detailed to show full compliance with current building and energy codes. The proposed exterior wall finish is EPIS, which is an exterior insulation finishing system. Um it's used frequently in the Northeast to provide a smooth finish that can handle. It looks pretty similar to stuff that you might find in more clients. The other primary exterior wall finish material is brick plating. Um it's intended to add some texture to the sod, make it more visually interesting, provide protection through water and snow against the finishing grade. Roofing is proposed to be a light-colored heat rub of a roof uh with a painted rubber finish. All exterior glazing will receive a to obscure the view from the exterior to the inside of the dispensary floor. Um this will not be a mirrored finish or a blackout finish. It's what you might see on a shower door. It just obscures the view, but it still allows light. Uh all building mounted lighting is intended to illuminate the sidewalk along the front of the building, sidewalk to the product delivery door, and all facades of the building. Civil engineers project already touched on site lighting, so I won't get into too much detail. Um we do show an example of some decorative lights that we're we're planning for the project. Um who's next? Here, all pictures on the building will be dark skies, styles with a similar exact number and type of pictures with the interior to get to that point, um to make sure we have a proper illumination around the building for security without nuisance to neighbors or. Ventings around the site specifically near the building need to remain low for security reasons and CRC compliance. Um this is really intended to keep a clear view so there's security cameras located around the site and also to prevent little pockets of dense vegetation where people structure the pipe. Uh equipment will be placed on the roof, so this would be HVAC as well as a small, basically household-sized generator for security system backup, using CR-C that's generated required. Um any equipment will receive and doesn't get those screened needed and the intent is to locate as much of the equipment behind the parapet that pops up in front of the building to limit the amount of exposure in the street. Intent here is to not have any of this from the street. And uh if we do that piece of aside, we would screen fairly. Um odor mitigation needs for dispensaries are typically minimal as all products delivered to dispensaries are already packaged. Um cannabis packaging is typically airtight for quality control and there will be no cultivating, manufacturing, packaging on site. Um they have standalone dispensary retail licenses. Uh none of those other functions are allowed outside for their license type. It will however include odor mitigation as part of the design, open design for the envelope and HVAC system. Um the building envelope will include air vapor barriers within the wall cavity. Then the wall assemblies minimize the risk of odor escaping through the walls and HVAC system will have filtration at all exhaust points. Um as our project is located in the Red Bank Special Improvement District within the downtown improvement district, utilize the Red Bank River Center Design Manual and the Red Bank Special Improvement District Handbook as guidance for the exterior colors, materials, massing, window door styles, onage, and roof lines. We had a meeting recently with the River Center Visual Improvement Committee and received valuable feedback on our design intent. It was a learning experience because they weren't familiar with the uh needs of the cannabis project and we weren't really familiar with the detailed needs of the downtown district. The conversation was very helpful. They brought up excellent points and a way to tweak the design to better integrate with Red Bank um downtown and special district established aesthetics. Uh we did our best to incorporate their comments and produce a more cohesive front facade, scaling up storefront glass and website building, really emphasizing the uniformity of the exterior. Uh we've kept a few key elements where we received criticism as they were important to the function of the building and the security needs of the business. Um it's important to the design and use of the building that we maintain the building hierarchy and keep the clearly delineated public areas separate with parapet heights, material colors, and onages. Um we did explore different options to better respond to their direct comments, but the facade started to blur together and lost an element of design. Um customers are familiar with retail stores and have a raised parapet that accentuates the entry. And it really only highlights parts of the building that are accessible to the public. So the design helps keep people from trying to get in the delivery door or access any parts of the building where they should not be. Our updated designs were submitted to the Visual Improvement Committee and it's instituted letters for the final science from this. Uh exterior signage, you know, just touched on this as well, so I won't get into the exact details. Uh we have provided details on the elevation sheet. It's on the south elevation. And all this really does is illustrate that the I-Laws are listed and up here in the slides with them. Um this is sorry, this is for the size, the graphic content coverage, sign-based geometry, colors, and illumination. Uh for this sign is approximately eighty square feet. Uh one inch four by four foot two is currently scheduled. Fans, maybe will be uh closed-mounted letters with cable backlighting. And that's the end of my presentation and available for questions if you have.
Then on the board, have any questions for Ms. Moberg?
Yes, excuse me. Um I'm looking at the signage. Um you can't, I can planning to put the words to cannabis dispensary on the building?
Yes.
Is that is that allowed now? It's not allowed. No, no signage that shows what it is. You can't have pictures or words. Sorry.
No, it's it's fine. Um it's it has been exempted in other jurisdictions, so it's it's a little bit of a surprise, but I don't think there would be any objections to moving here.
Yeah, because that's in New Jersey. Thanks. Nice.
Anyone else on the board? Your uh odor mitigation uh on the HVAC sys- system with the second system?
Uh most of it will be filtration. Um so there'll be filters at the intake points on the interior. Uh it's been wherever the returns are, do you want to fill out? No, stronger odors, the stories or the garbage. Um so we'll filter those if needed. We can put you on that to help mitigate that, you know, a step further. Ozone being introduced to the system is also an option. Um typically, as I said, there is not a lot of odor in the dispensary because everything is prepackaged and usually airtight packaging, so any odor is really ambient from the packaging. There's not a large-scale amount of odor that's going to be out of here. Um but again, to that point, we will put whatever measures we need to once we get the full HVAC design put together um at both the returns coming out of the rooms and also exhaust going out of the building.
Do you have a procedure uh once you uh begin operations to measure that?
Uh I mean, there are procedures that can measure that absolutely.
But you have no specific operational plans to uh have benchmarks to measure that?
Um it's honestly, it's usually unnecessary, but again, I mean, you can work that out and the details can be provided to whoever needs it at the time of permitting.
Thank you.
I have I have a couple more questions and I don't know whether they're for you or for someone else. Um the s- the the showroom, I'm gonna call it, um how many people does it hold?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. That number is typically fifteen, it's vertical. For some because accessory use assembly, it's it's the line essentially, um but we don't typically calculate that. It'll be based on we calculate less than that, uh less people, not more. We don't want it to be over.
Will your operations person testify to the number of employees, number of.
Yeah, some, all right, that that was that was where I was going, so I didn't know.
The final occupancy will be part of the final building permit level submission.
It's a function of.
It's a function of.
Okay, and the I guess the other other question I have that might be yours is about queuing. Um is there is there going to be a section of this inside or outside that's going to be like a waiting room, so there are not queues outside?
Yes, um the facility is designed in a couple of different ways to prevent any queuing outside. Uh one, the entry vestibule is a little oversized for its use. The ID check process typically only takes about a minute. So there's not too many people waiting to queue the ID check. Um but the floor itself is also large enough to accommodate an indoor queue considering at that point, so they can really kind of speed through the ID, uh you know, and then the piece and then queue on the sales floor and that would be done on the standards.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board?
I have a question. So does that mean that the um any lines will be inside of the building and not outside of the building?
What is the uh wall construction, the secure storage, the exterior walls? You may have mentioned that, but.
I uh I didn't go into the details, but I'm gonna get to you right now. Um so all partitions are a variation of the UL four uh four nineteen two-hour fire rating assembly. It's reinforced in security mesh, so this is uh for interior walls. It's three and five-eighths inch stud, usually at sixteen inches on center, sometimes twenty-four. I uh layer of nine-sixteen inch steel security mesh embedded between two layers of jipboard. Um that's attached to one one side of the studs. The insulation will be mineral wool and you'll have two layers of five-eighths inch type X with fire coats on either side um as the finished material. The exterior walls are similar construction, except on one side you won't have those two layers of jipboard. You will have uh sheathing, basically plating, EPIS insulation, and all appropriate by the construction exterior.
So that that steel mesh is essentially your protective layer. I'm just thinking hypothetically, somebody wanted to break into the building from the exterior.
It'd take you a really long time to put it that way. Um but yes, it's a it's a nine-sixteen inch thick piece of steel diamond securing mesh. Um the diamonds themselves, you see it sometimes as a floor, like a mezzanine, but the diamond mesh is is much more compact than that. So you're talking about something you couldn't fit a dime still in the diamond itself.
There's camera coverage and alarms?
Yes, there's absolutely camera coverage and alarms. Um I did kind of skip that as a security, but the flash rates all of this thing um hundred percent covered by cameras from all angles. You cannot approach, go inside, or leave this building without being caught on camera. That's good, thanks.
Does anyone from the public have any questions for the architect? That was leading it in the beginning. You need to start with a question immediately. Okay, grab that microphone for Mr. Byrne.
I'm sorry.
They'll be facing down.
Mr. Moberg. Tap that microphone. Okay, so we lost it. Hold on a second.
Going to face down. The intent is to wash the side of the building and illuminate only the strip right in the round immediately around the photon. All fixtures mounted to those walls would be dark sky fixtures, which prevents. And they would also prevent light spillage onto adjacent properties. I mean, but not. So the, those fixtures, the type of fixtures that we use are designed to prevent lights. So preventing spill onto your property.
Okay, I'm sorry. And how many lights are there?
Uh, we currently show one that's kind of centered on that building or it's, it's saving show. We currently plan for one on that facade. Exact lighting levels don't make facility patterns. We won't know that. We calculate the number.
My, my other question is, you mentioned the generator, you have to generate on the roof?
Small generator like you could see at a house. Basically, it just backs up the security system. It's the smallest one you can buy for commercial use. Only because you can't put a residential generator on a commercial facility. But it's, it's no bigger than a HVAC unit. Typically, it's about twenty, but it'll be calculated based on the, you know, the needs of the drop of them.
Okay, that's, that's definitely a generator. And the power pit in the front of the door, you're worried about the noise going towards main and into the river.
Yeah, absolutely. All of that will be shielded. We'll put up noise fencing as required. It, it's going to depend on the final design of the building, but the intent is for us to locate it as far away from the residential side as possible. So essentially, it'll be part of the building behind that parapet as opposed to the back of the building facing your property.
On the noise zone.
Yes.
You wouldn't think about putting it on the ground.
Oh, it's a consideration, but our, our intent was to put as much of the equipment on the roof to avoid. Having on the ground. It seems to be more of a issue than some of that for most people.
Okay, I understand. If you're worried about the door.
No, I understand. I understand.
Does anyone else in the public have any questions for the architect? Okay, we are going to take a ten minute break.
He asked me to address one of the points. The benches or potential landscaping for the front development or. Potentially a river walking future. So the CRC does have quite a few restrictions that they mentioned. Really, the intent is to not have anybody hanging out on site, which obviously the benches that they're visible for customers would potentially facilitate somebody going in and. Buying product and then enjoying it on the park bench. So the idea is to really limit the amount of time that people spend on the site. And this is both as they arrive at the parking lot, as they're in the dispensary itself, and after they make their purchases. The idea is really for people to get in, buy what they want and get out and not to layer and. Spend time on the site of all. That said. And Mike Allen will testify to this as well. I don't believe it would be an issue if there were some sort of physical situation. You're putting a river walk, maybe there's, you know, some fencing or a railing or something that would prevent people from visiting, walking onto the property. And I don't think there would be any major pushback from the CRC on.
If, if that ever happened, it would, it would physically be over the water. And if, if the CRC wouldn't allow it, there would be no access directly to the property. So I, I, I think that if that were to ever happen, it would probably pass muster with that. Okay, we're going to take a nine minute break now and we're really going to stick to that, so. Come right back.
Basically, you are. So you are allowed to have cannabis in the name if it is part of the business name itself, which it is in this case.
But I think in our ordinance.
If it's a local ordinance.
Yeah, we just don't allow for cannabis or any marijuana or anything like that.
Are you able to provide that number just for my own reference?
I'll look it up, get it to you once.
So in light of a little extra testimony there, does anyone from the board have any questions for Ms. Moberg? Anyone from the public on that new piece of testimony? Okay, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you. Next, I want to present Gary Deans, our traffic engineer. Could be sworn.
When I raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole crew is nothing.
Yes, I do.
Give us your thirty second rundown, Mr. Dean.
Certainly, Gary Dean, a, and principal of Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers. At fifty four Olin Street in Ocean Grove, New Jersey. Licensed professional engineer and professional planner in New Jersey and have been licensed since such since roughly nineteen ninety. I previously appeared before this board on behalf of our bank capital as part of the Hampton Inn hotel application.
You should leave now.
Who likes less traffic? That'll be the.
There you go. We're happy to accept you as a professional engineer and planner if necessary. Thank you.
Gary, you prepared a impact analysis for the site. Tell us how you picked the time and date. And what your study, existing conditions, level of service. And just go through the report and put in context for the board, so we can know that. Conditions are applicable to what we're projecting for the site.
Certainly, just by way of identification, our report is dated May thirtieth of this year. And it sets forth a summary of, of observations and counts that we made at the intersection of Route thirty five. Bridge and Rector Place. Most dispensaries are not open during what I consider morning rush hours, right? Seven thirty in the morning, it's just not a peak time for that type of use. However, the applicant would like the option to perhaps be open as early as eight AM. So he felt it was prudent to at least evaluate what traffic conditions might be on a weekday during the morning. Obviously, we looked at those same conditions in the afternoon rush hour, if you will, and then on Saturday. All of that traffic data was compiled in April of this year. So schools are in session and certainly what we consider to be representative of typical traffic conditions. You know, no major holidays, things of that. It's, there's no question it's a busy intersection. This property has a history, obviously, of not only approvals, but abuse. When Exxon operated at this particular corner. As you heard from Mr. Ben Narski, the site is currently served by three different driveways. None of them are restricted, so there are two driveways along Route thirty five and then the one driveway literally at the corner at Rector Place. Consistent with the consideration the board gave during the Hampton Inn application. Access consolidation of the primary concern for traffic safety. And to improve overall ingress and egress to the property. This application follows that same model. However, because the DOT approvals expired, we've now gone back to the state to reapprove. What was already once considered for the prior application. That obviously improves safety. It benefits pedestrians with too fewer driveways to cross. And it provides the least amount of ingress and egress to the site. When we did our study and going back to May, the original application secured an unrestricted driveway. We are aware when we appeared before, I appeared before you on behalf of the, our bank applicant. We had received DOT approval for re-stripe Route thirty five for a dedicated left turn. I know in your review packet, your engineer has expressed an opinion regarding the driveway. Your police chief has expressed a slightly different opinion. The application we've submitted to the state was for full movement. And, and I would solicit the board's input as to. Do you listen to your police chief? Do you listen to your engineer in terms of that ingress? I will once again advocate for the left turn. And my rationale for doing so is in the alternative, and, and your engineer suggested right in, right out. I think on an undivided road like Route thirty five. We can design it, channelize it, curb it. But if someone perceives that it's safe to make a left turn, they'll do it. And I would rather have that controlled in a sanctioned, dedicated left turn lane. Where it's safe to do so, rather than someone disregarding the regulation and the prohibition and trying to do it anyway. Because the alternative, quite frankly, is to go across the river, go into Middletown, where the highway becomes divided. Go through a joke handle and then come all the way back south. Can it be done? Yes. Do I think people will do it? Human nature? Probably not. So if there's a way to design it and we've designed it. DOT previously approved the dedicated turn lane for the Hampton Inn. And over the deliberation of that application, the board felt that right in, right out was. Better or acceptable, given the nature of the use with more travelers as opposed to serving the residents of the community. I'd urge you to revisit it. I, I can say the applicant is, is amenable to either. I would just once again advocate for safety and for acknowledging what in my opinion will occur anyway. I would rather see it done in a proper manner.
If the applicant is willing to accept with no left turn in.
Correct.
That's what we want to hear.
I, I did want, I did want to revisit the issue just so.
I understand and that, I, I remember the traffic testimony like it was yesterday with the Hampton Inn. Some of it was hard to believe, but this makes it simple.
It makes it simple unless you want to visit the facility.
People want to get their cannabis, they'll make the turn up in Middletown.
I, I, again, I have my opinion and I understand, sir. So we, we are not here to debate it. I just wanted to offer my opinion. Recognizing that it was once approved by DOT for the turn lane, so I, I could resuscitate that approval as well. But again, referring to the collective wisdom of the board, the applicant will, will so change. Okay, traffic study was prepared and apologies for that long preamble, but. When we first prepared the study, the applicant wanted full movement driveway, left in and left out. Obviously, it does not work as efficiently, for example, in permitting left turns to leave. Because of the traffic on Route thirty five, I can't say it any simpler. That's a hard move. That left turn would be really tough. So throughout the evolution of the application, it's acknowledged that that left turn out is, I could say, non-starting. I will say that means all of our levels of service, which is the term traffic engineers use to sort of. Raid how an intersection operates, A being the best, F being the worst. We, we were at E's and F's, meaning just wait a long time. By going to a right turn out only, meaning you can only exit through thirty five south. That takes us to a level of service C, which is great for rush hour. So that I can say the applicant certainly agreed to the left in. Again, we'll await your deliberation. You can proceed accordingly and amend our application with the state.
Your application presently is with the left turn in?
Correct. Unrestricted. And again, that's, that's.
Okay.
What our client directed, we would be happy to amend it again depending on how. The other intersection movements will be unaffected by the application. And I know I made a little bit light of who likes less traffic. When it was a gasoline service station. And I would say typically, with the number of fueling positions that existed. That would generate about a hundred and twenty trips per hour. Sixty in, sixty out as a gas station. When we went to the hotel, that started to come down a little bit. We had about eighty in the morning. A hundred and ten at night, a hundred and two on Saturday. So the hotel represented a step in the right direction as far as decreasing traffic. By contrast, the subject application brings it down to anywhere from a quarter to half. What the site previously did. So as I indicated, trending in the right direction of developing a use. That is not nearly as busy or traffic intensive, certainly as. The gasoline station, but obviously the hotels.
Those caps are shown on page five.
And when I go to page five and I'm just talking about comparison of traffic. Between the dispensary and the gas station, just showing those numbers. The hotel was, again, in that ballpark, but certainly less. So I tend to say when you have an opportunity before you as a land use board to. Consider a land use that reduces traffic from what it's historically been, I think that's generally a positive attribute of a given application. And as a result, if we weren't changing the driveways candidly, DOT would say, good luck, less traffic is fine, leave the driveways as they are. Wouldn't even have to re-permit the site. But I think the benefits associated with closing that, that driveway right at the corner of Rector. And then the one closest to the intersection on Route thirty five are all benefits associated with the subject application. Mr. Chairman, I know you asked about the corner and the radius and the. I looked at it and Mr. Ben Narski threw that to me. The problem with doing that is it winds up being, rough estimate, about a four hundred thousand dollar improvement. And I'm not trying to scare you. What happens in these instances is we could, the applicant could give the barrow the right of. Doing the work is a different animal because there's a traffic signal at the corner and there is a twin arm steel pole. The cost to move that pole isn't just the pole. What DOT says is. That equipment's twenty five years old. You want to touch one corner? Well, thank you, but I have to do the whole thing. It just turn a signal off and put a new one up. You have to basically build an entirely new parallel signal system. So that the old one can keep running while the new one's being built and that everything gets flipped over. The cost to do that for this one applicant are greatly exceed all of the other elements of this application. So I think the applicant can certainly consider a right of way dedication, no issue with that. I would also commit that while the driveways are being closed and curbing's being done and pavements putting in. That troublesome inlet, if it's still a problem by the time we're building, that can be fixed as well. But as far as flattening the radius and shoving all that signal equipment back, plus there's also a utility pole that has high voltage. That's about a thirty thousand dollar relocation. It, it just is a bit much for one. Corner property owner to bear the cost of doing that. So I would say if county can participate, state can participate. That's a little different, but to do it all is, is excessive in terms of cost. Beyond that, in terms of restricting the left out, certainly the site can operate safely and efficiently. The one driveway that would remain is fine for a low volume use. And I was remiss in not mentioning what the dispensary would do. And it's roughly about. In the morning, again, if they're open, it's a dozen customers at most. In the evening peak hour, that gets up to be about twenty five in an hour. And then on Saturday, like any shopping experience, that would get up to maybe thirty five customers. So where do you get those standards from? Traffic engineers use a publication called Trick Generation published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm sure the board has heard many presentations by traffic consultants. Individuals like myself or our firm, we go out and count, you know, we either put machines out or we measure traffic for any given land. And every six or seven years, all of this data is sent to IT and they publish it, whether it's for multifamily housing or supermarkets. Or cannabis dispensaries. Still a new land use. There haven't been that many. Most of the data points are from California, Oregon, Colorado, and Massachusetts, where it is newer. So the good news is, sort of like when you're the first store that opens, this lines everything. As more and more dispensaries open and we have to improve the Red Bank ready. No one store is going to be as busy as the only one in town. So some of the data over time we're going to see will be lower than what I'm sharing with you. But for general discussion purposes, and other than the honeymoon, what I call the honeymoon phase, when a, something that's new. And other than the honeymoon, what I call the honeymoon phase, when a, something that's new, you know, the shiny new toy opens. A lot of people want to go and it happens with Krispy Kreme or it happens with Sonic. It'll happen with dispensaries, but now that more and more have opened since, what was it, twenty twenty-one, when New Jersey first started. It's been suppressed at any one location as, as more and more. So I'm very confident that the numbers that are shared with you are certainly less than the Hampton Inn, much less than the service station groups. Um, and it will be a slow but steady type back to, uh, on that.
A quick question on the, the trips. On page four of your report, you've got a total in the morning of twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay. Wasn't your testimony just that it was less than that?
No, I said about a dozen in the morning, a dozen customers, and you'll see thirteen in, or thirteen in, twelve out.
For a total of twenty-five trips?
Correct.
Okay. So twenty-five, forty-four, and sixty-eight is your testimony?
Correct. Now, that was based on the twenty-three, thirty-five building area, and I know, you know, I picked it up in their report. Again, that two hundred extra square feet, it's two extra trips per hour. So that is not significant.
Okay.
Um, the, the last thing that we've reviewed, uh, is the onsite circulation. Um, Mister Ben Narski, I don't think we have the exhibit anymore. But we have the single driveway that has been, uh, I'll say pushed as far north as possible, respecting. The environmental constraints with the various buffers and, and repair and setbacks.
And away from the neighbors.
Correct. So the, the driveway directly at, uh, Bridge Avenue and Rector, that has been proposed to be closed. As, as long as Rector, we've pushed it as, as far north as we can. Um, and, and we, look, we know there's queuing, but the site needs some form of access. So being restricted to no lefts out. Possibly no Fs in, it, it is really the only means to access the site at this point. Um, and in my opinion, having once already received not one, but two DOT approvals, I'm confident they will once again. Approve this access, recognizing the benefits of closing the other two. Uh, you'll see it then enters the site, it turns southward and then to the, uh, parking spaces. Where we have. I want to make sure the numbers are right. Our study says twenty-nine, but I know there have been various revisions. We're, we're up to thirty-one parking spaces. Your ordinance requires fewer. Um, and again, that just provides, I would. Oh, a level of comfort that the site won't be overrun by customer traffic. Um, and then it dead ends at the southern end of the site because we do that one access. We don't have the. For the semicircular or horseshoe flow that we had previous. Uh, the truck enclosure has been proposed at the end of the parking lot, and that was by design. Expecting that, uh, we didn't want to have a need for those trucks to back up on Route thirty-five to access the enclosure. Uh, it is proposed to be buffered and screened from the neighbors. Um, and. In response to one of the inquiries that was made, I don't see it being in a viable location at the northerly end of the site. Plus, I think from a customer experience, as, as one drives into the, a site, I don't think any of us want to be confronted with. A trash receptacle as our entry statement to any given facility. Um, and screening it and buffering it at the southern end of the site logically makes more sense. Uh, refuse by and large would be picked up, uh, during, when the facility is closed. So it doesn't impact parking and it allows that truck to circulate and back out. Uh, you've heard the description of the loading area, loading for cannabis dispensaries is done in nothing bigger than a. Mercedes Sprinter van or a, you know, American product. And the reason is, is you've heard all the materials, concrete package, their box, there is inventory control. These are not served by trucks. So the biggest vehicle to ever access the site would be refuse. Um, and beyond that, the parking design and orientation is consistent with recognized design practice. So certainly meets all those appropriate standards. Uh, we do have the requisite number of, uh, handicapped accessible spaces as well. So with that, I find. Yep, there, there will be no detrimental impact to overall traffic, as indicated that. The fact that this is now my second bite at the apple as far as having been involved with a land use application. Certainly having it move in the positive direction to a low traffic generator, I think was. Uh, beneficial to the community and the public. So unless there's any specific questions. Covered it all.
Yeah, any questions, sir? Yeah, just a couple. Um, so for the left turns out of the site. What is the expected queuing, uh, during like a Saturday?
It, it's, it's in our study. It's, it's a lot. I mean, it's, the, the turnover is low, so fortunately. Uh, my expectation would be, and I want to get the right number, but it would be on the order of two vehicles. Just with thirty-five customers over the course of an hour, it's one a minute. Let's say it takes two minutes to get out. That might be two vehicles. If we calculated the queues, but, um. Right way. But the applicant has conceded, and I think safety first, will agree to no left out and, and go back to the design. With the board's consent of no left turn through a channelized physical high lift, which was included with the Hampton Inn.
No left in and no left.
I, I'm, but listen, I, I'll wait for the board to deliberate on. If there is deliberation necessary on the merits or lack thereof, permitting the left turning. But the physical width of the road exists to accommodate it. It was just changing the, the crosshatch draping. In the median to allow it and taking advantage of some of the shoulder area on the opposite side to shift the through lanes, but. It fit, it was approved. If you don't want it, we're here to listen and, um, take your considerations under advisement.
Wh- whether the board either acts favorably or not, or as a group decides they do or don't want left turns. I would like to see the previous approvals from DOT. So if you could submit those to our engineer or Shawna, if you've got them from the previous application, I'd love to see what they approved. I don't anticipate finishing this tonight, by the way. So, you know, if you could submit that, we'd like to take a look at that. And don't take that. As anything more than I'm interested in seeing what it looks like.
The design was slightly different, only because.
Driver's.
Angle of the driveway was more pronounced. It wasn't at ninety degrees. But I could certainly provide you with copies of both of those approvals.
Okay, thank you.
The queue length, and I'm. Uh, on Saturday, even though it's level of service, if I hear it is, at the ninety-fifth percentile. It was actually three point six vehicles. So it stacks within the driveway. It wouldn't block any parking spaces.
But they would be waiting almost five minutes on a Saturday, the turn line.
Correct. I, I don't know if it'd be five minutes, but it would be.
Yeah, I think, I think we wrote it in our letter as two hundred and eighty-four seconds.
It would be lengthy, correct. The morning peak was one and the evening was. One point, so two, two at night.
Anything else? Nothing further questions for the board, the public? Anyone from the board have any questions for Mister Dean? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mister Dean? Right, Mister Byrne, the microphone again, please. You were previously sworn in still under oath. Just remind us on the record who you are again, please. Get a little closer with the microphone, please. Everybody in the back can hear. Just get a little closer to it.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. Uh, I got disagree with you, I have a dumpster. I feel bad for the people that will have to come in and have to look at a dumpster. I'm just sitting here thinking of all the places I've been around here. That there is dumpsters when you drive in different places.
But what you're really thinking about is the question you're going to ask Mister Dean.
That it's, I know, I don't know. My question is, it, it, you said that the garbage would be picked up on off hours. Well, I don't think black people in the house are going to want to listen to a max dump, uh, garbage truck in there banging the dumpster. I don't think that's fair. I own a residential place there. I don't think that's fair. And if you look on the north side there. You, you could eliminate that one parking place, put it over here and go back in further with the dumpster and the truck without any problems. Back around and go back out.
I assumed as well that you would pick up off hours. I am.
Still waiting for a question.
Yeah, I know. Well, I, I'm about a thousand feet from a multiple dumpster situation at a bank at home. A thousand feet. And they bang that thing at six in the morning hard. So the reason I brought this up was because I feel like it is way too close to a residential property. And I would like to see an option in writing for, to move it.
I have a question. Um, and, and we've sat through three of these already, so. And all the testimony was, there's really no garbage.
That is correct. It is.
So why are we talking about a dumpster?
I believe your ordinance requires one.
Yeah, well, we could give a waiver.
How many yards is this dumpster?
Not I can answer. Usually two. I mean, what makes the most sense is what's used for residential service, which is what, a ninety? Downer, ninety quart with the lid and just roll it out and.
That's what, I, I'm pretty sure that's what we've approved before. There's no reason for it. If I remember testimony, the only waste are going to be what people, your, your employees with coffee and. And paper products. There's nothing, you're not going to be taking cardboard's on, and getting the. Uh, like a, like a grocery store or something like that. Everything's come prepackaged and it's leaving in the same package. Do you really need a dumpster?
I, I think you've got an opportunity here. Greg, you can comment in a second. I think you've got an opportunity to relook at this. Talk to your operator. You've got an architect, obviously, who's got a tremendous amount of experience in this type of use. Perhaps she could share some information as well that, that could make us feel a little bit better about that.
No, I think that's a very fair suggestion. I think it's a very practical one. Obviously, an applicant comes in and. You know, understands there's an ordinance that requires certain things, but, uh, you know, that works both ways, so certainly.
Sorry, you, you have any thoughts on this? Yeah, no, I, but if the board is willing to waive, I, I don't see an issue with that, you know, if they, if they can accommodate it. Inside the building and have, you know, a smaller vehicle, you know, take, take the trash away. I think that would be, you know, one win.
That's right, just packaging that goes down with the contamination of the much part.
Well, Mister John, I presume there's a, a large amount of cardboard, uh, involved in the, uh. Packaging the product for transportation, so. Yeah, I guess I, I would need more. I wouldn't mind a little testimony on the, the garbage in and out, you know, is your, are your, are the. Is the product coming in those plastic totes and is your vendor going to take that with them when they come back the next time? And how much cardboard do you anticipate? So let's plan to talk about that next time.
My, my understanding is just that, Mister Chairman, is that because of inventory control and being a regulated substance, it's not. Boxes that get cut open, it's packaged for delivery to this specific store. Inventory is handled right there in the back and then the totes leave. So there's actually very little. Cardboard and recycling. So that, that's why we'll revisit that later.
Any more questions that you didn't really ask?
Would you, would you be willing to look into my town that he needs the one arm things?
Yeah, that, that's what I was describing with the lids.
Yeah, and they have, they have them for recycling.
They're still, they're still going to need an enclosure of those things. We don't want them just sitting out. You're welcome.
Thank you.
And also a public asking question is for Mister Dean. Okay.
Thank you very much.
One more, Mister Byrne.
Yes, we have, uh, our security expert, uh, Mike Allen. Who addressed, uh, security issues around the site.
I'm going to raise your right hand, just swear tell truth, tell truth, nothing but the truth. Tell us, uh, where your office is or.
Sure. So, uh, good evening, uh, Mister Chairman, members of the board, uh. My name is Mike Allen, uh, Michael Allen. I am the principal of Armstrong Security and I am a. Cannabis, uh. compliance and security consultant for cannabis, uh, companies in Rhode Island. Jersey, Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Florida.
Where's your office?
My office in Hampshire. Home office.
Hmm?
Home office.
Do you have a New Jersey office?
Give the board the, uh, benefit of your experience first.
So, uh, my experience in the industry, I'll, I'll back up from that first. Um, I, I'm a retired police officer. Spent thirty years as a police officer up in Rochester, New Hampshire. My last five was the police chief there before retiring back in two thousand sixteen. Uh, spent three, just over three years as a hospital security director. Uh, when I retired, while at the same time doing consulting work with cannabis operators. Also a, uh, New York area veteran, spent five and a half years. Uh, both in active duty, United States Air Force and Hampshire National Guard. Uh, as a security police officer as well. So I have just about forty years in total of, of security. Experience, uh, and, and cannabis specifically.
What, which are the, uh, CRC requirements?
I'm very familiar with New Jersey CRC requirements. I've been consulting for several other cannabis companies in New Jersey. Uh, for the last couple of years. So I've been well versed in the regulatory. Uh, Almond Park, uh, Del Ran. Eaton Town, Neptun City, just a few.
Okay. You're good. Uh, describe the site and the, um, the, uh, security requirements that have to be, uh. Employed here.
So, um, I think it's important to note that, that, uh, when these, uh, security requirements are designed, they are not a cookie cutter approach. They are, uh, designed specifically for the location. Um, in, in the community because every community is different. Every police chief I talk to, uh, in different. Uh, states that I've done work in have different requirements, uh, towns have different requirements. So. Security plans are designed specifically for the site. Um, one thing that is consistent that I, that I do implement with any security plan. Is implement a process called crime prevention through environmental design or SEPTIN, which you may or may not have heard of. But it is a set of design principles and methodologies, security methodologies that. Uh, not just are implemented in cannabis, but in any, uh, security. A plan that's developed for any type of business. Um, so I did a lot of that when I was a police chief in, in Rochester, New Hampshire. And that's been transferable over into the, into the cannabis industry as well. So, um. We did that with this particular project. Um, some of the highlights, I, I don't want to get into the, to the weeds unless you want me to. About all the intricacies of the security system that would go into this particular location, but. You know, really, some of the, I want to address some of the questions that have, that have come up, uh, earlier specifically to video. Surveillance and how that system gets its access and who monitors that. Uh, that's a big part of our security system, the physical security system. So. Uh, with regard to that, we essentially cover every square inch of the interior of the facility with the exception. Of the bathrooms, obviously, um, and, and the exterior, uh. Facility and both our property and situational awareness even beyond the property line. So that's important because, um, one of the questions that came up earlier was about monitoring of, uh, the river. Monitoring of, uh, the river, the riverfront area and having a seating area. One of the regulatory requirements that the C R C has is that we have an obligation to monitor. Public access areas, um, that are, that are within the vicinity of our, of our establishment. So that being said, um, we we want, we don't want public consumption. I know you don't either. We don't want loitering on on our property. Um, so so those are things that we would take into consideration and monitor. Not just with our own security staff, but also, um, we'll give access. The C R C is mandated to have access to our video system, but we also go above and beyond that and we. Give that access to the Red Bank Police Department. So that's something that's in our security plan. And, uh, it's an important element of of it because, you know, it really acts as a fault, a, uh, force multiplier. For any police department. Um, every chief I talked to across the country is understaffed, so so to have access to that system. Is is really a, a, a big, um, security asset to, uh, to the facility, but also to the borough. Um, there also consists of, uh, a number of different security features, uh, inside the facility. Motion sensors, you probably have heard this from the other applicants, motion sensors, glass breaks in all areas where there, there's, there may be windows. Uh, we have access control, electronic access control doors, um, on any of the back of house areas, the vault. Uh, the the break room, uh, storage areas are obviously are. Uh, any back of house area is gonna have electronic access control on it, but to get into the facility, you have to go through. A screening process, as Jesse had mentioned earlier, uh, electronic access control. Door to get, uh, into the facility, into the sales floor, you have to buzz in. Uh, your ID is scanned, not just electronically. I wanted to just talk about that for a minute because. Having worked in the industry and worked in multiple states for the, for this, the number of years I have. What I see is a lot of fake IDs that are utilized, just like in alcohol establishments. They're, they're, you, they're using cannabis as well. So having a system in place, not just. Physical screening process of G I D, but electronic screening. Can go a long way to deterring someone from wanting to pass a fake ID, but also preventing diversion. So we will have a system that not only scans a barcode, but also authenticates an ID. What I mean by that is it it checks all the different security features of the ID, like micro. Like holograms, um, and all the other security features of an ID. So. It's, it's really, uh, again, above and beyond what the C R C requires. We feel it's very important. Very important to us. I know it's very important to you all in your community, because the last thing we want is our product. So I see it a lot, and that's why we put systems, that's the system in place and obviously.
Talk a little bit about, uh. Mr. Burns, please pull your microphone closer. You're not, we're not picking you up.
Talk a little bit about, uh, deliveries and cash management.
Sure. So deliveries, um, so deliveries are already mentioned, the type of vehicle that delivers the product. Uh, the delivery agent arrives at our facility. We have onsite security at our facility, so, um. Our onsite security would assist the delivery agent in the, the, uh. Move, moving the product from the vehicle into the back, uh, receiving door of our facility. That's a very secure process. The vehicles are all equipped with cameras. They're equipped GPS, there's radio communication that's required, there's alarm systems that are in these vehicles. It's a very, very good process.
You say you have an onsite security person?
That's correct.
And is that person armed?
That person will not be armed.
Not be.
Not be armed unless that was a requirement of of the borough. So. Um, I personally, from a law enforcement standpoint. Am not a big advocate of having armed security and for the, for obvious reasons. Whenever you, whenever you have a weapon entered into an environment or reach an environment like that. The, the risk associated with that to me outweighs, um, the deterrent aspect of having. An armed officer in a facility. So that's, that's a personal opinion of mine, but I, I think I share. I share, um, my colleagues in law enforcement would share that and share that opinion. Um, but if there are some that they want it. But the, from the simple fact of the deterrent value in it, not because. You wanna attempt to engage in, in, in an armed confrontation with someone who may attack the robbery of a facility like this.
And that, that's up to the police chief and your, your report and approval.
That's correct.
That's fine.
So, so that, that's essentially how delivery would would begin. So, so they, and and I know, uh. It was mentioned earlier about reviews and the type of packaging. That we would, uh, we would generate at that facility and how much cardboard essentially we. We would generate, it wouldn't be a lot, because when the pin, when the pins, they do come in pins. Uh, the typically from the, from the supplier. The pin is inventoried on site, so they'll open the pin. It's usually in a sealed bin. Um, so the seal is broken, the inventory, the product within the receiving area. Um, make sure everything's, that, that was on the manifest when it left the facility is on the manifest when it's delivered. And, um, it's then brought into our vault from there. So, so the packaging is, is really minimal. That it would be generated from this facility. And and I see no reason why we couldn't have. Uh, the bins that, that, that were mentioned earlier of, uh. Uh, the smaller type. One for trash, one for, one for recyclables, um, that would prevent from having to have a big dumpster outside.
Uh, cash management?
Cash management, uh, very important, has to be under, under, uh, camera view. Uh, the cash is kept in a, in a safe and, and contrary to popular belief. There's not a lot of cash that that goes through these facilities, um, now, today. Uh, and the reason for that is because, um, debit cards are, are. Primarily, believe it or not, used at these facilities versus cash, the ratio is about sixty, forty. Meaning sixty percent of transactions are, are debit card. You can't use a credit card still, but you can use a debit card. Um, and, and so about forty percent are cash still, and we do have a very, uh, stringent. Cash management process, so regular cash drops from, from registers, um. We hit a certain threshold on our cash safe, uh, in our, in our, uh. Registers, uh, that, that cash is removed and stored. And there are frequent cash pickups from the, a licensed honorary car service. That would, uh, transport the cash from the facility to the bank. So, uh, again, very strict process with strict, uh, cash management controls that the C R C requires.
Uh, you heard a lot of discussion about, uh. Pensions on the exterior and going in a, a few amenity. You have any comment on that in respect to C R C regs?
Yeah, so, so the C R C, um, can regulate. Whether we have benches, you know, a, a riverwalk, if you will, that you're planning. Uh, along that, along that river adjacent to our property. What, what they wouldn't care about is, are we, are we doing our due diligence to monitor those areas for. Um, for public consumption or loitering, uh, you know, in an effort to. Potentially, uh, have a diversion event. So, um, we use our security staff to monitor our cameras, uh, assuming they, they're able to, to view that area. Uh, via video surveillance. Like I said, the police department will also have access to that, to that system. But, but in terms of the C R C restricting us or restricting that use. No issue. Uh, no issue. They only care about our property, what goes on on our property and public. Areas in the vicinity of our property. I hope that answers that.
Covered pretty much all the site issues, operational issues, interiors, the facility.
Anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Allen? Greg, do you have any? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Allen regarding his testimony? Come on up, sir.
Raise your right hand, just swear tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth. That's who you are.
And I just have one simple question, uh, we talked a lot about security. And because we're going to have, uh, possibly few special sites within a block. And the neighborhood, uh, is, uh. Young families and so forth, uh, is there any kind of study they point to? Or, uh, statistics that, that show impact to the neighborhood? Right to each other?
That, that's a great question. Uh, I'm not aware of a, any kind of national study. Uh, what I can cite is, is a. You know, I do, I do a lot of work in Massachusetts, um, and. There was an early study, um, of the impact of dispensaries on communities. Uh, in terms of crime, uh, reduction, actually, and, and what, you know, I. This is not a scientific study that was done by any means. It was, it was an actual article. Or, or, or a review done by a reporter from the Boston Globe. And what they found was in their poll, um, that crime actually reduced. In areas at sites that were developed for cannabis dispensaries in the, in the surrounding areas. That when that, when that's, when that, you know, assessment was, was originally done, so. Yes, that, that's a big part of it. Um, if you think about. You know, a lot of these facilities are, are being, uh, built out and a lot of them are blighted. Uh, areas or properties that, that have, you know, just sitting there vacant for a long time. So when you put. Camera surveillance, state of the art camera surveillance, a lot of security staff. Um, I mean, law enforcement to be able to view. Cameras in an area that otherwise had no camera coverage. When you think about all those things. It, it makes a lot of sense that, that you would, you would come to that conclusion, that, and, and, and the actual crime statistics that. That have, um, have been tracked have actually gone down. I can get it. Absolutely. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the pub, and from the public have any questions for Mr. Allen? Okay, Mr. Brown, we're looking to carry this. Um, we are done for this evening. We think. We can accommodate you with our next meeting, if November twentieth works for you. Um, I say think because I feel like one of the applications is gonna be kind of quick. Uh, if you wanna push out. You're welcome to. It's up to you.
I actually have a conflict on that date. When is the, when is the next meeting?
At the fourth. December fourth, yes.
It doesn't, no.
That would be better for me. You need all the witnesses back? You want, who do you wanna hear from?
You probably should bring him.
You need security?
I don't need security. Again, I, I feel like, you know, we, we want, uh, we want, we definitely need your engineer. We wanna talk about the dumpster, um, or, or your, your trash. We're gonna want Mr. Dean. To, I, I wanna, I, like I said, I'd like to see that left turn. From the previous app, uh, applications. I don't think. Um, we need the architect. So, and I don't think we need Mr. Allen either. So.
So.
I'm sorry, Mr. Allen, I figured, you know, you'd love to have another date to come down to Jersey. We don't have the fourth. We don't have December fourth? So it's December eighteenth?
So, yes, yeah, I can do the.
December eighteenth. And what did you say about the architect, Mike?
You don't need your.
No, I don't think, I don't think we do. So, i- if that's okay with you, December eighteenth.
Uh, works for me, but, um, I just wanted to go over with you. So you don't need Mr. Allen. Uh, we want the engineer. We want Mr. Dean, the traffic engineer.
Yes.
The architect as well?
I don't think we need the architect.
Good. Okay, so the two witnesses and maybe we'll, uh.
Yes.
With your, your board engineer, dumpster issues, trash, and we'll focus on that. We'll come back on the eighteenth.
Ladies and gentlemen, this, um, we're gonna make a motion at a moment to carry this. There'll be no further notice to the public. This is your notice. So if you wanna come back, please join us on December eighteenth. Um, if we get any information to post on the website in advance, we can do that, right? No, okay, we don't do that. I think we should. Okay, you can't see Shauna, she's very friendly. Uh, I'll make a motion to carry this, uh, meeting, this application to December eighteenth with no further notice to the public. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed or abstained? Thank you very much for coming out. We're not done up here. I know, I remember. But thank you very much, Mr. Dean and company. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Uh, we have one other small administrative matter at the minutes of October second, two thousand twenty-three. I'm sure you all read them thoroughly. Does anyone have any comments, additions, or thoughts regarding those minutes? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve them? At the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. And I'll make a motion to adjourn. See you all in two weeks.
All in favor?
Yeah, we're all in favor.